Been there real good.
Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020. This evening we have an agenda of items, and as usual, we'll start with a coronavirus community update from Chief Mike Cassidy, who's sporting a very festive tie this evening.
He's coming to visit me. He's on my side of the table now.
I see, yeah. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. We're gonna try things a little bit different tonight. Chris is going to bring up a presentation that I have prepared. Sometimes visuals are helpful. So where we are right now, 343 total cases in town since we began tracking this in March. 273 have recovered, seven COVID-related fatalities, and there are 62 active cases that are spread out over 48 addresses, which include nine clusters at single-family homes, one cluster at an elderly housing complex, one cluster at a multifamily dwelling, one single case at an elderly housing complex, one single case at a multifamily dwelling, and 36 single cases at single-family homes. So, early on, I know when we first entered the red status as a community risk level as determined by the Department of Public Health, at that time, we'd had a large cluster at a long-term care facility. That is not our experience right now. The majority of our cases are all at single-family homes. So, community spread is certainly taking place throughout our community. In terms of where we line up compared to other communities, if you see here, a lot of the communities around us have already gone to the red designation based on their positivity rates and their average daily incident rate per 100,000. Around us, Framingham, Ashland, Medway, Mellett's, Bay and Mayek, they're all in the reds. And Sherburne, Hopkinton, Holliston are in the yellow. If you go to the next slide. Holliston is the yellow, the state average is red, and the blue line is Metro West region. So, there are some weeks where we've been above average, and there are other weeks where we are below average. I'm pleased that right now, as of the last data points, that we are both below the Metro West as well as the state average for positivity. But I am concerned, you know, all it takes is one week's worth of data for that to change very quickly. We continue to focus on the social media messaging, and we just want to remind everybody that with the holidays coming up, that we want everyone to do their part to keep things safe and only celebrate with people in their household with whom they reside. Because, next slide, holiday gatherings increase the risk of COVID-19 spread. So, again, there's a question about when vaccines are going to be available. We are pleased that a second manufacturer received emergency use authorization over the weekend, and so Moderna is now being shipped as well. So, that's adding to the supply that was provided previously by Pfizer. And there are two more that are in the pipeline, which include Johnson &amp; Johnson and AstraZeneca. But we do also, and this was, this next graphic was posted by the police earlier, yep.
Before we move on from that graph, I know we usually ask questions afterwards, but it's up and I don't sound out.
Sure.
Are there subcategories under each phase? Is there a 1A or 1B?
So, they are-
Or, or just a complete sentence, or under Phase 1, for example, in Massachusetts, I think we have 130 Pfizer vaccines coming.
Yep.
Does that fit, are the 130,000 all of Phase 1? Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I apologize for interrupting. So, Pfizer plus Moderna will be part of what is done for Phase 1. And in terms of 1A, 1B, 1C, that was an early plan that was being developed by the Commonwealth. The order that you see there right now is the order that they're being administered, which is why I know the question came up last week, where do first responders come? And based off of DPH call that I was on last Friday, they're indicating that probably the earliest that they would be able to do first responders, fire, police, ambulance workers, would be January, we could January 4th or January 11th would be the earliest that that would be available. So, they're working through the priorities that are listed there, which is why, you know, those who are in a healthcare setting that are COVID-phasing in their job are getting them right now. And then the next phase, which is going to be done through the pharmacies, through the long-term care facilities, restaurants, assistive living facilities, and then they're still working out the logistics of how to do the police, fire, and EMS. And then we've got the other ones, the conjugate care setting, which include directions. So, that phase is three months, but it's not all going to be one manufacturer that's going to do all of those.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Mike. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's fine.
My scream is off.
I welcome, I welcome questions. And then this was, this graphic has been, this next graphic has been posted by our police department as well as several other police departments. But we do want to remind the public to beware of scams associated with the vaccine. The vaccine, as part of Operation Warp Speed, of the way the government designed this, working with the manufacturers, it should be at no cost to the end recipient. So, if someone tells you that for a deposit, they'll get you at the front of the line, or they want to have your information so that they can put you on a waiting list, chances are, it's probably a scam. So, just be aware and look for authoritative information being published by the government, by, obviously, your physician, primary care physician, through major pharmacy networks. But if somebody cold calls you and offers to let you get to the front of the line by just providing that with your PIN number or something like that, don't fall for it. So, we will pause here for any questions related to the update on our current experience.
Two things. First, this is great. I like this. I'm a visual guy.
I know.
I like charts and things like that.
It's not just because I came closer to you?
Maybe it is. Maybe it's my influence. I don't know. But this, I mean, this is the stuff that I do all the time, and I just find sometimes being able to visualize the data really can hit it home and see, so you can see. And I'm always looking for, what were we comparing to? I like to benchmark against other things, so I appreciate that you used Metro West and the state. How are we doing compared to everybody else? And there's a lot of noise in there, clearly, but still, Alex there. So, thank you. I think this is great.
To that point, do you think it would, do you plan to put this up on our COVID website as a complimentary?
I absolutely, I absolutely can add this to our weekly updates.
A lot of people like that, you know, and I'm like that. I prefer to see.
Well, you know, like a simple chart could, can hit things home in a very simple way than sometimes with hearing the numbers isn't as impactful.
Right. More to think either are we all alone, or are we part of a bigger trend?
Right.
And moving forward, I think this will probably be the format with, you know, the assistance of our technology director, because I just think it's helpful that we just rattling off a whole bunch of numbers. I think it's more helpful to have it in a couple of bullet points up on the screen.
And I like, I like seeing the trends, and I like seeing it against other communities in locally and across the state. So, my second thing is, is that, could you speak a little bit more about, so when we're talking about the vaccine?
Yes.
So, I know, obviously, some folks are getting it through, through work because of the nature of their positions and things like that.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I know I'm at the back of the line, and I understand that, I expect that, and I want the people who are a lot more important than me to get it before me. However, there are a lot of us at the back of the line that kind of want to know, well, how does that look for us? Have they given any guidance to, you know, if you're not getting it through your job, are they gonna call you? Is it through your primary care physician? Is it, you know, you have to go to the McDonald's and go out back and talk to a guy named, you know, whatever. So, is there, can you give us some guidance on that?
So, just as they are still working out the logistics of how to just get it into the arms of the police, fire, and EMS workers, they really haven't come up with a master plan yet for how they're going to do the public. I can tell you that for 20 years, boards of health have been developing mass vaccination plans, planning for things like a SARS outbreak or some other pandemic. And with the current plan that the state has, especially with the limitations of storage and shelf life and how quickly things need to get pushed out to points of distribution, there are some local boards of health that are very frustrated. I've heard them on these conference calls, because they're questioning, why did we do all of this planning for how we were going to do a distribution in our community, if you're now telling us that instead of 350,000 cities and towns, that it's going to be several dozen with regional distribution points? And so, there's a, there's a tension going on between the locals, the regions, and the state.
Some of that may be the nature of the vaccination needing to be maintained in a certain refrigerated environment. Not every board of health has the capacity to store things at-
Correct.
You know, sub, sub, sub-reasing.
Which is, which is why, as we see more manufacturers getting the emergency use authorization, it will make the distribution process easier, because we even see a difference between the Pfizer that first came out and the Moderna in terms of their storage requirements. And then, as I mentioned over the weekend to you in my update by email, you know, one of the exciting things that we've got potentially on the horizon is the AstraZeneca vaccine may not be a double-dose requirement. It might be a one-and-done, so to speak. So, they're, you know, they're looking at single-dose efficacy, which would be a game-changer, just because, like, right now, all of your counts for number of doses needs to include the fact on Pfizer that for every single dose, you need to have that second one that's coming six weeks later. So, in terms of the public, my expectation would be that just as the pharmacies are going to get through all the long-term care facilities, elderly housing complexes, through the contract, it probably will be that a lot of your larger chains will end up offering clinics. And whether they do it in their brick-and-mortar store or they partner locally, and whether they're using an arena or amphitheater or some large open space where people can queue out of the weather to be able to do it and sign up ahead of time and have your appointment, I think that's where the tensions and the logistics are gonna balance out in the future.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I understand. Mike can put in the cart before the horse. But I kind of just wanted to see if there's any, had been any guidance.
Sure. I mean, some of the plans that the boards of health have made over the years actually were very innovative in terms of when they were thinking that they might need to be putting certain dosages, or certain doses of medications in the hands of every resident, but that wasn't going to need to be administered by a healthcare professional. The postal service was part of that plan, because basically, they reach every household. Well, this isn't the sort of vaccine that can be distributed by your postal employee. So, a lot of the planning and assumptions that they did in terms of getting certain pills available to the public for certain types of hazards aren't available for this pandemic.
My other question is a little bit unrelated, but obviously, you know, we're subject to media influence and things like that, and people are talking about a new strain in the UK.
Yes. The variant that could be 70 times more transmissible than-
Probably 70%.
70%?
Oh, 70%. But, you know, who knows? I mean, you might have-
No, I, I could have misheard the headline as well.
70 times.
Yeah. So, we talked about this when we were talking about what the research was saying with regards to the vaccine. Is it going to be, once you've had it, are you good for life? And we talked about the fact that there are mutations of the disease. So, the fact that the UK has now identified this more transmissible version, some of the research is questioning, is this because of better testing, and that's why they're discovering this? Or is this truly a mutation that we need to be concerned about that's gonna spread around the globe even faster?
We need, we need a little bit of time to be able to do some research and understand what's actually going on there.
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, we're, we're right at the one-year mark from where this was first starting to see individual and clusters of it in China.
Yeah, I mean, the mowing year there.
Right. And, and starting to have, you know, certain restrictions on travel and stuff. So, we're, we're only a year into the novel coronavirus.
Sure.
So.
Okay. All right.
We'll keep an eye on, on that UK strain and just make sure that you're not entertaining any visitors from England.
Not planning to, but thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks again for putting the presentation together. This is very helpful. So, thank you.
Yeah. So, Ben, I signed up for the vaccine at work through signup genius.
Oh.
That's kind of like, we're figuring this out on the fly kind of thing, including that little bar that, you know, you normally put in the potluck item, you know, my name, and then the, what are you bringing to the vaccination party kind of thing. So, it's very much on the fly, very much like figuring it out as you go. So.
And there have been some healthcare facilities that have really been challenged by how to get it out to their workforce in an equitable manner.
Oh.
Because when they open up that app, certain shifts are sleeping, and when they wake up, all of the appointments have already been filled. And so, there's, there's some tension, and some healthcare systems are still trying to work out how to make sure that everyone needs it, because they are truly COVID-phasing, are getting it first. So, there's, there are some growing things.
Yes, for sure. And definitely some unknowns.
So, hopefully, we'll get it all worked out before it's available for the public.
I do think that, I mean, honestly, I think the first thing for a lot of people to get tested will become part of the study for what to expect. But, so I had a couple of questions about vaccination of our first responders.
Yes.
You mentioned that there'll be a regional plan. It won't necessarily be 351 towns and cities that are planning to vaccinate their first responders, but that it will be a regional plan. Does Holliston fall into a region that's already been identified?
Not yet. So, right now, the DPH is in their information collection phase, and what they said was, anybody who thinks that they have the capacity to host one of these, indicate your, your desire. But even if you don't get chosen in this first round, you know, don't lose heart. There may be opportunity for you in the future. But they're, they're just now collecting all of the data, because in order to be a regional site, you need to have the storage capability.
That's my question, yeah.
You need to have the ability to staff it.
Yes.
You need to have the ability to track it.
Right.
You need to have the ability to, you know, manage both the inflow of people parking, the directional flow within a building. So, again, not every community is, is wired to be able to do this. So, because they haven't said this community, that community, and that community sort of in this, these counties yet, and we don't know whether we're gonna be heading in the Framingham direction, or we're gonna be going in the Franklin direction, or, you know.
So, neither you nor the health director have stepped forward to say Holliston has the storage capacity, the infrastructure to handle this?
No.
So, is it fair to say Holliston will not be one of these?
We will not be hosting a first responder site.
Okay.
Also, you know, you needed to be able to produce 200 individuals who would be getting the vaccine. And, you know, between our police, fire, and EMS, we don't have 200 individuals, so that would require us to partner with another, you know, community. And when they were looking for an answer, hell, last week, we weren't in a position to be able to raise our hand and say, we will absolutely, you know, commit to doing that, because it's just, we didn't feel that we had the capacity to be able to.
Okay. That was my question. And then, have you heard anything about in-home self-cov coming our way? And if so, what, how do you, how do you see that rolling out in the Holliston community? But maybe the answer is no, you haven't seen that.
I, I've heard a question on one of the DPH conference calls. They were going to move that up the side pole and get back to us, so we don't have real definitive answers yet on what that's gonna look like for the average citizen and how that will get tracked and reported to the local board.
Okay. Okay. And then, last question. Those 62 active cases you're reporting tonight?
Yes.
Contact tracing, are they the result of, a direct result of Thanksgiving's travel? Or are we a cycle beyond that, and this is spread from the community and not specifically travel and gatherings around the holidays? I'm asking because we have Christmas, well, we have many holidays coming up, so.
We do not have any clear patterns that have been shared by our contract nursing agency in regards to where the bulk of the cases has, has come from. But again, as you look at our numbers and baseline those against others in the region, everybody's trending upward. And so, some of this is pandemic fatigue. People are tired of restrictions. People are tired of being picked up. People are tired of hot scene family. Plus, you add in a holiday, plus, you know, people are out shopping and shopping local. You know, I'm not saying that we have clusters associated with shopping, but just people are going, people who may have been isolating more are now going out. But, you know, last I heard at the state level, they couldn't identify in at least 50% of the cases where people had contracted the disease. So, it's, contact, contact tracing is a, is a hard science, and right now, they're just trying to keep up with the new cases and making sure that they're giving them the proper advice on how to quarantine, making sure that they have all the resources they need, and they need to get meals delivered, if they need, you know, if they've gotten access to services. So, a lot of the, so who are you in touch with? Where did you, you know, where might have you contracted this? We don't have a lot of those answers right now.
Okay. Last question, and truly last question. Can you throw up the slide, Chris, that had the timeline on the vaccinations? Because my question, maybe this is an unfair one or too soon to ask it, but with the schedule-
Slide seven.
That had, yes, Phase 3?
Yes.
Is this a fair statement, or is it too soon to say something like this, that it's during Phase 3 that we would look to end the state of emergency as well as the local emergency?
Ooh. I think it's too early to answer that, because Dr. Fauci has indicated that even with vaccination available to the general public, that a lot of the mitigation measures of the phase covering requirements, social gathering, size restrictions, all of those mitigation measures still likely need to be in place at least until the fall.
Okay.
So, I, I, I think that April to June might be early to suspend the state of emergency.
Okay.
Do you try to restrict my hours?
I believe later in the evening, we're gonna-
I look forward to the day of doing it.
I won't lie about that one either.
I, I-
And you should do. We're happy you have them, and we want you to lose them as quickly as possible.
Right. Yeah. I, I look forward to sleep, so I, uh-
Amen.
And did you know that Santa is vaccinated? Dr. Fauci announced that today.
I, I did hear that Dr. Fauci had, had made a trip to the North Pole and had personally administered the vaccine to the, the jolly man from the North Pole.
Right, right moment is today. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. My questions were already broached, and thank you for addressing mine midstream to your presentation.
Of course.
Regarding the point Ben brought up about the emerging strain out of Europe, I just pulled it up. There was an article in the New York Times yesterday by Porbar Mendevilli. It's excellent, and it does talk about the, the nature of mutating coronavirus. It's very in-depth, and it's a good read if you're into trying to figuring out what's going, what's going on with it. It's not unexpected that the virus does this. They all do this. The question is, where is it going? How turbulent is it?
And, and that's why what was identified last December into January was labeled as the coronavirus 19, because it was the 19 novel coronavirus. So, yes, absolutely, it's expected that just as the influenza virus each year mutates and other things such as the bird flu and swine flu, those all mutate over a couple of years. It's not unexpected.
Mike, on the numbers that you showed originally for the spread within Holliston.
Yes.
That does not capture employees or workers within Holliston, correct?
No, this is just residents.
I, I don't know if the schools are tracking teachers that have been positive or not, but I'm more-
They, they have their own dashboard where they-
I saw their dashboard. I can't remember if it had numbers of teachers. It was cases.
They, they do not, for transparency reasons, they do not differentiate between staff-
Students.
And students.
Okay. For our purposes, though, when you look at these numbers, thank you, are there any COVID cases involving especially first responders within Holliston?
Uh, I don't have any-
Currently?
I don't have any current first responders. Looking at the list of active cases, I know that at least two of them are healthcare workers. And so, that is concerning to me that these are individuals who, despite all the PPE, they are in a COVID environment all day long, and unfortunately, they-
I, I concur. But the reason for the question is just, again, to point towards what appears to be a relatively safe environment for our employees to be working in across the town.
Yes. Yes.
At least we can say there's, there is no spread within our public buildings, I guess, is the point I was making.
Yes. No spread, no spread within our, our, our public buildings. And our first responders continue to encounter either presumptive cases or positive cases, and yet, through the proper use of PPE, through limiting their contact, we have not had any occupational spread that's been occurring.
That was, yeah, great. All right. I will ask anybody on Zoom call if they've got any questions for Chief Cassidy on the coronavirus community update portion of our agenda. Hearing that, we will move on to the next item, the CARES Act programmatic update. Chief?
Okay. It has been a whirlwind 72 hours. Just a few days ago, I was meeting with the town administrator and the town accountant and the treasurer collector, and we were trying to make sure that tonight, we were gonna be able to button everything up for you, so that we had obligated all of our $1,377,137 that came in from the administration finance by December 30th. And it looks like, based on things that are happening down in Washington, that we may get a 366-day reprieve, which is a welcome change, because obviously, we didn't want to turn any money back in to A&amp;F, but at the same time, we didn't want to spend frugally, and we acknowledged that there would be ongoing expenses past December 30th of this year. So, we're in a, we're in a good spot right now. We've still got some money left in our, you know, the 1.3 billion that the board has responsibility for. And I have two requests for you this evening.
Oh.
There we go.
Wow.
That was a C-span image.
Um, well, I do want to acknowledge that our federal partners are the ones that made, made those funds available to the states initially. And so, originally, we were gonna bring several more requests, but rather than just do projected, we think we can actually have some tighter numbers on things like employment, solid waste recycling, some sick and MNA, employee expenses. But in terms of what we're looking for tonight, there are two requests. The first one is for air purifiers. This would be for air purifiers to be strategically placed in offices and certain municipal offices, municipal buildings. And I've done some research, and I'm, I've been looking at getting the same air purifiers that the schools recently purchased. And theirs were purchased through a rebate program with a utility company, which was only available to the schools. But in terms of trying to get it standardized, so that everybody's sort of using the same equipment, the business manager shared with me what he, he had acquired in quantity involved. And they are $270 apiece. So, the request would be that we pick up 10 of these units. So, my first request would be $2,700 for air purifiers for municipal buildings.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Kina?
I have a question. Is this evidence-based? Is this best practice-based? So, my question really is, here we are in December, and we're making this request.
Yes.
What has changed to bring a request at this point in time as opposed to, say, August? Or is it that we are indoors and we're looking at the-
So, our ability to get a cross breeze and to do air exchanges is harder now that we're in winter.
Okay. So, this is a seasonal thing?
Yeah, 'cause in order to be able to circulate the existing air that's in the rooms or the enclosures, it's easier when you get out your windows open and you can be getting fresh air and getting cross breeze. But when windows are closed, because it's a little freezing, and you want to be able to scrub the air through the proper, you know, filters, that's where this is coming from.
Okay. All right. So, there was no evidence or best practice in place prior to now that would have had us purchasing this? This is, and that we're catching up and doing it at this point in time? You're saying that this is the season, and this is the time?
Some departments have gone out and gotten them individually.
Okay.
And I know that this was a request of some employee groups, and they were in conversations with certain working committees.
Okay.
That they were looking for them as well. Because, again, it's that balance between is it the best practice? Is it feel-good? Is it a, does it actually-
Well, I think that's significant, because of the responsibility to provide a safe work environment. So, I accept that you were saying that this is seasonal and that there's a growing call from employees to have this in place for their comfort level. I accept that.
Right. Yeah, because when, when the windows were wide open in April, when it was July, it wouldn't have been a lot good. But, because mostly what it would have been, probably would have been more. But now, the windows are mostly closed, it would be appropriate for us to be, again, giving the employees a higher degree of confidence that beyond just the air handlers at the ceiling, you start whole building, but that in their individual workspace, because they'll be up to 875 square feet, would be, be scrubbed on a regular basis.
Plus, they're more efficient in that, obviously, now all these windows have been updated so that they can be opened more easily, which will be helpful in the spring. In the meantime, if we were to open those, it means- it means that we're cranking up the heat to allow the airflow, whereas these will allow us to keep the windows closed and still continue to circulate the air and on top of the HVAC.
And, and there are a lot of, um, white papers that are going on, you know, facility manager groups with regards to, you know, how to make sure that you're doing a lot of air exchanges per hour and ensuring that you've got the right filtration in place for your occupational site.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Tina?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike, real quickly on the air purifiers, uh, is there maintenance involved? Does somebody have to clean the filters and is that, is that a concern in terms of biohazard?
Uh, there will be filter replacements, uh, on a, uh, at least annual basis. Um, but it's not a biohazard. It's just a regular filter change out like much of our, our HVAC.
Got it. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the CARES Act request for ten air purifiers that cost two hundred and seventy dollars a piece for a total of two thousand seven hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hi, that carries. Mike, next one.
And the second one is, uh, six hundred dollars. Uh, this comes to, uh, us from the facilities manager, uh, right now to make sure that we've got the air handlers where they are, uh, bringing in the right outside air, um, mixture. Uh, it is being done manually by, uh, our facilities manager, uh, sorry, by our technology director. Um, and so that's really not a good use of his skillset on a, um, on an ongoing basis. So the facilities manager has said that we can get, uh, the company to come in and, uh, do some programming of the unit so that it can be done automatically or it can be done remotely and, um, doesn't have to be-
Just for the building, Mike?
Uh, yes. So, that, uh, that is the request, uh, for six hundred dollars for programming of the air handlers.
Question, Ben?
Uh, you asked my question.
Tina. So follow up to my question is, um, do we have such programming abilities in our other public buildings? Libraries, police, senior center, et cetera, to automatically control air movements?
Uh, some buildings have it. Um, I, the facilities manager brought just this building by attention because again it's, um, that-
Got it. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, so I guess the question I had, is James on the phone? James, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Uh, so the question really is, is it, is it, is it something that we should explore expanding into other public buildings to be able to remotely control the, uh, uh, air handler program?
Well, currently, uh, the system that's in the town hall is also at the senior center. So this program will take care of that. Um, the library as well as, um, the seventeen fifty parts and rec are on individual separate thermostats. So this, uh, this wouldn't take care of that.
Can you remotely handle both buildings from a different medicine system?
Yeah, the, uh, the library is a, actually a mechanical system on mechanical time clock. So it basically clicks on in the morning and clicks off in the evening. So that's all set. Typically those don't operate in the winter, but we've overridden that so that they do operate in the winter. Uh, seventeen fifty is just manually clicking them on. You have to go to each thermostat. Um, and, uh, the police station is, 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 has been programmed, so that's okay. Uh, so most of the buildings are taken care of right now, uh, with the exception of the library and, uh, town hall. I'm, I'm sorry, not the library. The senior center and town hall.
All right. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the programming of the air handlers for town hall, um, slash senior center for six hundred dollars.
So much.
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hi, that carries.
That is it for this evening.
Mike, thanks so much for coming. Travis, go ahead.
I would just reiterate, um, the, the lead here, uh, obviously the intention was to bring to you a full package to close out potentially the CARES Act, um, by the deadline that was originally set at the end of this calendar year. Uh, the indications that came out today, uh, from a few different sources, including, um, M A P C and, and, uh, the four ninety-five partnership, you know, and, and some of those groups that are looking at what's coming out of, uh, the federal stimulus package is that the word is, um, the coronavirus relief fund, uh, extension is gonna be part of the package that would extend the CARES Act, um, deadline from December thirtieth, twenty twenty to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So that's why we've, you know, based on the last conversation we had to this conversation, we've shifted our approach. Um, and if that were to be voted in official, uh, I would leave it up to the chair whether or not we wanna sit down again on December twenty-eighth, um, but that, that is sort of to be determined.
Well, along that line is that some of the guidance is from the state too, right? Like with the transfer reporting and things like that and how it's administered to us? So does it have to go through a second layer through the state before we can actually see official changes? Even if the federal government changes it?
So my expectation would be that as soon as guidance comes in from treasury, that A and F will issue a new bulletin. When A and F actually distributed their, uh, reporting deadline matrix mid to late summer, they actually had reported previous through the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one. So, e- even though they had told us everything had to be spent by December thirtieth of two thousand twenty, um, they still had reports that would, quarterly reports that would be due potentially later on, even though all the funds had to be obligated now. So, um, they're already set up to be able to allow municipalities to continue to spend down, uh, either their round one or their round two apartments.
And the, uh, the report would still be due in January, but it's-
Or what was spent through December. Yes.
Okay. Mike, thanks so much for your continued work. Outstanding.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to our agenda warrants. Up next, Mr. Sparrow.
Okay. So we have, uh, one warrant from the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. And of that payroll is one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. So I'll make a motion to approve the warrant as I just read.
Have a second.
Uh, second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hi, Ben Carries. Thank you, Ben. Public comment, Mr. Sparrow.
Um, I think my only public comment is, uh, to just remind people, uh, happy holidays, be safe, be smart, and, uh, let's make sure we can open our school up in January of holidays.
Okay. Thank you. Tina?
Yeah, so I have, um, two public comments prepared, uh, that I wanted to share. The first is just to update the board. I attended the finance committee meeting last Tuesday night and raised my, my own intention of participating in a different way, in a different type of budget process for F Y twenty-two. I mentioned that I'll be taking the stance of, of looking to return more taxpayer dollars to the operating budget. Um, but I did not get into specifics on the call on Tuesday night as to how. I shared that our board often hears from residents, um, issues that are solved through the services from our town departments, particularly those departments that fall within general government and public safety. The finance committee chair thanked me for my comments and then I was offered a challenge to approve and present to the finance committee department budgets that reflect the level of service I thought was needed. I found that interesting and frankly, uh, I'm excited to get started on that challenge. I wanted to provide that update. Um, I also wanted to share that since Thursday I received, I have received many resident complaints about snow removal on our local streets. Um, and during and following this most recent storm, I've heard from folks all around town, so I do not think it is just a single neighborhood that's having the difficulty. Um, I had an interesting comment from, one interesting comment from a resident who asked if our snowplow operators participate in training on best practices. Another resident asked if we own enough sidewalk plows to the task of keeping them all clear. And yet another resident asked if we had considered a bylaw to require residents and business owners to maintain the section of sidewalks in front of their homes or businesses. Um, with the growing focus and demand on, uh, uh, safe access to sidewalks, I do think those questions should be explored. Uh, I'm also interested, um, in the near future, if, if not this evening, to have a conversation about how the town handled, uh, plowing this most recent storm. Um, the, the calls and concerns were, were quite vocal, um, and a steady stream coming in since Thursday. So I, I think it's something the board ought to ha- at least have a discussion about. I imagine we'll hear from more residents, um, in the coming days as well. So those are my two, uh, public comments for this evening.
Tina, on that highway, um, department, uh, public works department issue you brought in, um, I, I completely agree with you. I think we've all heard from the residents across the board, we're not here to put our heads in the sand. Uh, Travis and I have had at least two different conversations about an after-action review, um, uh, on how the town responded for, uh, this most recent event. Um, I think it's important, uh, first of all, to acknowledge that it, it fell below our expectations. Uh, I think that's putting it mildly. Um, there are some factors in play, which I think we understand at one level. Staffing, uh, experienced plow drivers familiar with areas is one. Um, but Travis and I talked about it today, um, you know, he's, we've gotta give the town administrator the opportunity to pivot into, um, public works department and review and deliver back to us, excuse me, a management plan on how we can expect the service to improve to the level that citizens, uh, expect for our next event. This being the first day of winter, uh, I think the time is right to act on that. So Travis, if we could ask you to, uh, report back within a week on how things are going and if you need more time to develop a, a response to these citizen concerns and our overall concerns about the department's readiness for future snowstorms, I think that would be timely.
Could I add to that, that, um, the type of training that the, that, uh, is undertaken by the D P W plow drivers would be, I'd love, I'd be curious to know, is there training available for them and do they, um, access that training, um, within their schedules? And then also are there equipment needs, I'm thinking particularly of snow, uh, sidewalk plows, but are there equipment needs that would have made a difference? I think it's just, I think it's the town's responsibility to make sure that our D P W has the, the equipment and staffing and so on and training to do the job well. So I'd like to hear from their perspective, um, how they feel about that too.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. I actually have a few items, um, I'll go over them. Um, in a gentle way, I just wanted to bring forth, uh, a relatively sad message that entered our lives this week. Um, a young resident of Holliston, uh, died this past week in a public way. Um, it involved a lot of, of folks from youth and family services, um, combined efforts of other towns. Um, it was a, a call for mental health awareness. Um, I believe the family's been very vocal about that since this young man's passing. Um, as a father of children and young people, I think we all share in our, in our sympathies and our condolences to the family, but most importantly, look inward and whenever you have a chance to see somebody who might need help or is in distress, um, talk to one another, help one another, um, listen, act as needed. Um, and most of all, try to, uh, find somebody who can help. Um, there's never an opportunity to, um, not try to find the help. And, uh, during the season of holidays, it's a lot of stress, uh, added on to the pandemic we talk weekly about. I think we acknowledge, uh, as humans, we're all under a, under a lot of pressure, um, keeping check with one another is something I think we can all do readily and certainly in the memory of this young man. Um, I think we, we should all owe it to each other to do the best we can every day. So I wanted to approach that in a gentle way. I hope I did, uh, to honor his memory and his family's.
Can I just share one thing?
Please.
Do you remember we had Karen, uh, Senator Silva on one of our calls in the fall?
Yes.
And she mentioned that the week of that time that she sent with us, they were, um, unrolling, unveiling an initiative. And so it, it hashtag more to the story. So if you use that hashtag, you'll get a bunch of resources on mental health, um, raise awareness and direct people to resources. So again, uh, it's to Senator Silva's office and it's hashtag more to the story.
Our own youth and family services, uh, would also be a good resource for anyone who's interested in that, so. Um, I wanted to pass along on behalf of the board, our, our very warm holiday wishes to all town employees. Um, it's a time of the year where we have to reflect and thank. And, um, I, I most especially wanna thank, uh, Travis Hearn. Welcome. This is your first season with us. Your staff, you've done a great job this year. Um, it's, um, it's always a pleasure to come in every week and, and attend to the town's job, uh, and, and I also wanna thank Mr. Sparrow and Ms. Heine. Uh, it is a thorough pleasure to serve with such great people. I've been on the board for two years now and I've served with multiple people. It's a pleasure to come in and always work with a variety of people who put the town first. They're thoughtful, they're smart, and Holliston should know you're in great hands with many of these people. They're all doing great work for us every week, uh, so we're thankful for that. I wanted to recognize a few public events that also show what kind of a great community we're, we live in. Uh, this past week, uh, the senior center, uh, got involved with delivering meals, um, as a result of a grateful, uh, and wonderful donation by the newcomers club and the Holliston Police Association. Uh, they delivered meals to, uh, seniors in lieu of their annual holiday dinner. Uh, I think they have queued up, uh, similar delivery of gifts for seniors in Holliston as well. It's a wonderful program. The Holliston Lions, um, had a rolling caravan, uh, this past weekend delivering, uh, gifts for seniors and other people across, uh, the town. Another example of how that club constantly reinvents ways to give back. I was a former member and loved serving all the time with them. They did a wonderful job this weekend. And finally, uh, Holliston P D got involved with Ashland P D, six year in a row, uh, to fill a cruiser, um, for Toys for Tots. It was enormously successful event. Again, people showing their generosity at a time of great need. So good things happening in Holliston. Um, it's all, uh, it's all good and I just wanna recognize it in the public comment. At this point, I'll ask if there are any public comments from the participants on the Zoom call. Linda Marshall, I think you have your hand up. Hi Linda, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Good. What's on your mind?
So I'm gonna follow up on a little bit about what you said for the senior center. Um, and first, first of all, we want to actually thank the community, um, for the amazing job that they have done. This week we will be delivering gifts to over two hundred and fifty, um, isolated seniors. Um, we want to especially thank Girl Scout troop seven, five, three, four, six, who really got out there in the community organizing the gift drive. A number of our local businesses hosted, um, donation boxes that the Girl Scouts, um, made and picked up and they wrapped all those gifts that were donated through all the different people in the town. Um, that, I, I, I'm overwhelmed by the response that we've gotten this year. I've done this drive for probably fourteen years and I've never seen anything like this. Um, our mission was to support your neighbor and support the community, um, the community businesses. And, um, the town certainly did that. And I'm gonna add to your list of organizations that are really good to the seniors. Uh, many people don't know that the V F W has for a number of years now provided a monthly Sunday dinner without fail to about forty to forty-five homebound seniors. Um, so we're just so fortunate here in this community and I wanted to share that.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you Linda for doing so. We appreciate it. Uh, happy holidays to you.
You too.
Any other, hi, Andres Vargas. I see your name, uh, your hand up if you'd like to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. Uh, I wanna second also the motion of thanking, uh, everybody that's been doing such a wonderful job. And I'm very glad to see that the snow issue has been addressed. Uh, I was one of the people sending the letters and I think it's a huge problem. But I only thing I wanna add to that is enforcing, enforcing the way that the private plows also work. Uh, I think the town plows were doing a great job that was being undone by private plows. And if you go to East Holliston and go around every single business that had a plow come in, dumped the snow on the sidewalk, making the towns work much, much harder than it should have been. So if we can add the enforcement of current laws of not dumping into private, uh, into public land, I think that would be a great help.
Excellent point. Excellent point. Thank you.
Can I jump on that for a minute?
Go.
We have a sidewalk study about to start in the upcoming days, weeks, I hope. Uh, is this feedback that we could have the consultants look at in terms of bylaws that could be strengthened? That, um, are, are lacking that could be added? It was a question I had early on when we did our first go-around requesting the study, um, of town meeting. Uh, and I think given the snowstorm, it's worth coming back to it. Are there bylaw changes or, or updates or, um-
I heard you say sure. My reaction was a little different, actually.
Maybe it's one you should ask.
I mean, that's the sort of the thing is like we can certainly have the conversation. That's what I, that's what I'm-
Right. But I think when we talked to, um, Erica, the, the scope of what we were having her look at was more, uh, geometric. You know, show-by sidewalks, not so much on the legal side. It doesn't, like you said, it doesn't hurt to ask, but it may change the scope and thus the cost.
Well, you know, we'll, we'll ask the question and then maybe, you know, maybe we, we might have to do a little bit on our own to do, to get to something like that, but then maybe that, you know, that can go in, um-
Well, so if the snow's coming out of the sidewalk, you know, if the snow's coming out of the sidewalk study, then where would a review of our bylaws and, and possible bylaws come from? How would we originate that, that conversation if not through the, the sidewalk study? So that, we don't have to answer that question tonight?
Oh, you're my office, the town, and I, I can't think of, I mean, planning would be an option. Does the traffic advisory committee touch on sidewalks?
Um, we, funnily enough, we really haven't had any petitions, so through that process, no. When you look at the charge-
I think it did.
You could, yeah, absolutely.
That might be a good place- That might be a good place to originate any, any thoughtful reviews of bylaws, either existing or new.
I don't think it would hurt to have sort of a, a multi-pronged approach to it, to sort of look at from a couple of different angles. So maybe legal, maybe traffic, maybe, maybe we can ask, certainly ask the traffic study and stand back if there's any possibility of doing something like that. To, to John's point, it might be, it might overwhelm the scope, but at least I'll ask the question.
Well, because I think if I remember correctly, there is a piece of that sidewalk study that looks at operations and management, maintaining what you have. And I wondered if the town meeting under that. I just asked a question.
Yeah, we can, we can ask. I'll definitely ask the question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none. We'll move on to comments from the town administrator. So a couple of things. Um, we met on Friday for the select board to approve the DPW one-year contract to get us through this fiscal year. The DPW units of the water and highway divisions both ratified and that was put into effect today. Thank you to the board for meeting on Friday and thank you to DPW stewards for getting that to the finish line that will get us through this fiscal year and we'll be sitting down soon to talk about the future. Similar to the one-year arrangement that we had with HP, the HPA. One other thing I wanted to mention, since we've had quite a bit of snow discussion and, and I've been asked to bring that back next week, would be one of the items that was approved at special town meeting is, was the design and engineering for the demolition and future planning of Nine Green Street. The facilities manager and myself had done an RFQ, gone through the official procurement process to get the quote that led to that article. At this time, we can certainly act on that quote, having gone through the process. But as we only received one response, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention to see if everybody was comfortable. James Keith and I did do a call with PAR, the group that we've used for other items in town. It's a, it's a well-renowned group. I think that the, the team that they would be offering us would be solid and I would be comfortable going ahead with them. But I did want to just get the board's feedback on that before bringing it to you for a vote next week, as early as next week. Any feedback on that, Ben?
I think my only comment would be is if we went back out to do something like that, that certainly would push out the timeline if we.
It would.
Back out. And I think we're kind of trying to move this forward. So I think, I think that would be my main concern at this point, this, this time.
Yep, certainly. Tina?
So I looked at the quote that they, that PAR provided.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, it, it looked solid for what it was. I didn't have any real specific concerns. There was one piece in it that I, and I cannot find my comment, so this may be something I just direct to you after, but there is a service there looking for the town to provide. Excuse me, I, I talked to James about it at the time and again, I apologize, I don't have the details right in front of me, but that was the only thing. It was a very minor thing, but that's the only thing about the quote that stuck out. And I, I, you know, I had wondered at the time if we had other bids, rather, would we have seen other ways of approaching that? It was, I think had to do with electrical engineering and that the town would provide those services. So it's a very minor thing and I will provide you my feedback from that mill at the time.
Okay.
But I agree with Ben that this is something we want to get moving on.
Okay.
And so I will, if you'd like to send me that, see if I can address it before next week.
Yeah.
Otherwise, my, my intention would be to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And if, at that time, the, you know, we, we want to take more time.
Yeah.
To do that. Okay. And then I'll just mention tonight that I have a couple of things under Other Business to discuss, just to preview them. One would be updating the agreement with me, Tullerman and Costa to include litigation. So I would include that under Other Business this evening. I don't, I don't think it's something that needs to wait until next week to be on the agenda, but just to highlight that and we can discuss it again under Other Business. And then the other one being under Other Business would be if the board wants to entertain a vote to direct the police chief to locate signs of where he would like, signs for the new 17C to go into place and then to direct the DPW to, director to install them. We could certainly have that conversation under Other Business or if the board would like, we can bring that back next week as well. Bring it in under Other Business. Okay. So we'll discuss that shortly and that's all I have at the moment. So do you need a consensus? You want to vote on the Nine Green Street or is it good enough that you have a consensus that, I, I personally have no objection, we talked about that earlier. Yep. You good with that or you want to vote? Um, if we're going to take a vote tonight, we would do it under Other Business. I was just sort of getting the temperature at the moment. Okay, we'll bring it up then. Okay. Anything, so you're good? Uh, moving on, we will now move to the review schedule for the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting and Town Election. Okay, so this is something that I'm getting used to coming to Holliston is that we vote or we, we post for next year's agenda essentially or, or dates before the end of the calendar year by our bylaws. So when it was looking like we probably wouldn't have a meeting next week and we still may not, I decided to bring it tonight to make sure that the vote was taken ahead of time before the end of the calendar year. Chris, if you could put up, that was the first item here. So this is what it would look like. This gets posted on the clerk's board. And so just so everybody's aware, the, the way that the schedule shakes out based on our bylaws is that the annual town meeting would be May 10th, 2021. Right now, the plan would be for the Holliston High School Auditorium, 7:30 with some backup dates. Then the fall town meeting would commence on Monday, October 25th, 2021, based on the bylaws. I do have heat down here. I've added a sentence that should the governor's orders related to the COVID-19 state of emergency still be in effect, these dates could change. And then additionally, within this announcement would be that the annual town election will take place on Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Holliston High School Gymnasium. Again, that state of emergency could, could impact that if it is still in effect. Otherwise, if I could get a vote or any questions and then if there were a vote, I would post this. Any qu, any questions on the draft notice of these various meetings from the board?
Just one quick question here. So the notice that I have here to sign is not the same one that is on this, does not have the language about the governor's orders. Would that be impactful?
Yes, I will print this for you, just on.
Okay.
Any other questions? Good, otherwise, we'll take a, I'll take a motion to accept what is proposed as the notice of the annual town meeting.
Absolutely.
I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie, so that's the one with the.
Yeah.
Governor's order at the bottom, Travis.
It does not.
Ready to go? You fit there?
We are.
Let's move on to the FY22 budget discussion. So for this, I just wanted to cover a couple of things. A message went out to department heads today. I just want to cover a couple of highlights and then, you know, go into any level of discussion that the board would like. So the, the information that went out to department heads to share with their chairs and committees, chairs of boards and committees if appropriate, is that we'll be looking at a level service budget for FY22 with the very clear caveat that a level service, level service budget is not a zero percent budget. I just don't want any confusion there. Providing level services in town can, can sometimes require that our, our costs will go up depending on things like utilities, software licenses, et cetera. And so that directive has gone out. Additionally, at this time, we are not setting many assumptions on things like cost of living adjustments. And so we have more information from the federal government on stimulus, which would then lead to some more information from the state on where we can expect state aid to come out. So at this point, you know, directions have gone out of how people should approach the budget. Additionally, a new capital request form that, that was not used, part of the process previously has been added. And so, you know, we'll, I'll be fielding questions if anybody has any, but essentially we want all departments that have capital needs to be thinking on a five-year basis and putting those down and, and providing them so that they can be added to the five-year capital improvement program to be tracked through the town administrator's office. Finally, there's a liaison sheet, obviously the select board and the finance committee each sign liaisons to all the boards and committees that have budgets. And finally, there is a schedule here, which I've also given to Chris. This is just the, um, an example of the select board schedule. There's also a finance committee schedule, but just so you're aware, you know, we've had a little bit, this may need to be amended if, if, you know, sort of anything changes. The select board has requested that some Thursdays be added this year to help the process, give a little bit more time for review. And hopefully, if there are questions that the select board asks or, or can't be answered on a given night, would allow a department to, to sort of go back, sharpen their pencils and come back to you. That was a request also of the select board. So at this time, I, I think also, just one thing I would point out is that on, on January 19th, which would be the first night where we sort of, the select board begins to look at the budget, my intention too would be to bring to you an overview of where we are projecting for revenue at the time to help the select board make informed decisions on, on each budget. And as we need to amend that as we go, with more information coming out from the feds of the state, we can do that accordingly. So if there are any questions or any issues, oh, one last point would be that the, the actual, sorry, the actual budget sheets will not go to departments yet. What we'd like to do is make sure that all of the expenditures through the first half of the fiscal year are in units before the accountant sends out those budget sheets so that people can see what they've spent for the first half of this fiscal year and have that impact their requests.
Well, I got a few things. I just want to mention that we have a 7:30 hearing. Um, and I probably will monopolize quite a few minutes with what I want to say about the budget process.
7:30 right now.
So I just wanted to sort of throw that out there. Do we want to go forward or do we want to?
Let's wait. We'll bring, we'll come back to the budget discussion. We might as well open up the hearing now.
Okay.
Because I, I have similar.
Yeah, we'll probably, this is going to be a little longer.
Talkable questions, so.
Okay.
Do you have the documentation to open the hearing, Mr. Sparrow?
I do. I do. Okay. Um, please forgive me, Ken, if I mess up your name, so I'm just going to do my best here. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws of Massachusetts that a public hearing will be held by the Holliston Select Board on Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board's meeting room at Town Hall, Room 105, 703 Washington Street, to consider an application from the Alcohol Enthusiast, also known as Crafted, owned by Kenneth Onoffrey, for a change of license category from wine and malt off premises to all alcohol off premises located at 400 Washington Street.
Thank you. Mr. Hearn, would you like to introduce this issue to the board? Sure, was the motion made, seconded and we opened the public hearing?
So I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So are you? Sorry about that. Thinking on you, Travis.
[laughing].
Yep, no, so, no problem. So the, um, the Crafted license, I believe what, what has happened was the intention was to increase or was to change, as, as the clerk just read, from the wine and malt off premises to all alcohol off premises. And I believe that all of those votes were actually taken correctly previously and it is just a clerical item between us and the ABCC. So one thing would be to vote again to make sure that it is the intention of the town for Crafted to have the all alcohol off premises license. And if that is the case, that we would then file again with the ABCC to make sure that Crafted is all set. So I've attached, obviously, also what you will be, what you will be signing and that is a 2021 seasonal population increase estimation form, which you'll also need to sign, which is just what we do on an annual basis with the ABCC. Uh, let us, welcome Mr. Onoffrey to our open hearing here. Ken, do you have any comments to make at this point? Ken, we're not hearing you, so perhaps you need to unmute? All right, we'll give him a couple of minutes to key in. At this point, this is simply a transfer of a alcohol license, is that correct?
So it's not a transfer, it's, um, it's, it's essentially a, I would describe it as an increase in the latitude that the license provides.
It's expanding.
Yeah, expanding the service level.
Um, well, we're waiting for Ken to join. If he does, I'm just curious to know, um, how many alcohol licenses do we have in Holliston currently?
I can pull that up.
I believe this license came from somewhere else, is that correct?
Yeah, so it was voted, we had to have it approved through the state to increase the all alcohol license. Um, and so let me just pull up.
There's an article in town meeting, I believe there is.
It was, yep. Um, all right, so actually, I'm going to pull up our previous, um, meeting from last week when we approved these licenses.
Mr. Vargas, I saw your hand go up. Just hang on one second, we're going to just let Travis address this. Stand by.
Yes, so previously, the wine and malt beverages were for Central Cafe, Corner Market and Crafted. Now this license would leave the, well, wine and malt beverages, excuse me, for the pool, so which would join the Depot Package Store, the Holliston Wine Spirits, the Lincoln Liquors and the Wine House. Would, so that would make five.
Um, well, we're waiting for Ken. Andres, if you wanted to ask a question at this time?
Um, thank you again for giving me the opportunity. It is regarding Ken's license. I am a direct neighbor to Ken and I received the email, the actual letter from the town inviting me to this meeting to talk. I had the opportunity to talk to Ken before to let him know what I was going to say here so that he could prepare and hate to give him a surprise on anything I have to say here. Um, it would have been absolutely fabulous if we had been included when the license was originally issued, if that was done without consenting, asking the people what impact it would have on the communities. That said, and I know Ken will have an opportunity later on to address all the issues. There are basically two issues that one affects me, well, my household, and the other really affects the larger community around me. So let me start with the issue, well, actually, let me start with something else first. I believe that Ken is a wonderful business person in this town. This town benefits tremendously from having him and his business is probably one of the best in the town. I personally do not drink, so unfortunately, I cannot give him as much business as I would like. But, um, he's a wonderful person and in that sense, I support this business 100%. The first issue that I want to raise, and obviously I am under the assumption that an increase in the, or a change, as you said, in the type of license is with the intent, obviously, of increasing the amount of sales that you produce. Nobody wants to get a higher license or a better license, more expensive license to sell less for the state. So we are going on the assumption that there is an increase in both pedestrian and vehicular traffic coming into the store for pretty much more business. So now coming to the actual issues. The first is a nuisance caused by the lights when cars park in front and especially when they're idling. Unfortunately, the parking lot is some 10, 12 feet higher than our house, than the level of our house, so the headlights from cars shine straight into our living room, dining room and kitchen and yard and pretty much all of our house. Some people stay there 10, 15 minutes while they're shopping with some lights just blaring into our house and to everything. As I had talked to Ken, the solution is extremely simple. A privacy fence over the existing wooden railing would solve that issue, but that would be something that Ken would have to organize and arrange with the landlord. If we can add to that some signs that ask the patrons to please turn off the lights so that they can respect the neighborhood while they're idling there, that would also be helpful. Or if Ken and the landlord have talked about different options to address that nuisance issue, that would be ideal. I'm sure Ken will address those things. The second one is really related to a, a, a safety issue that I believe is much more important than the first one and it involves a lot of the neighbors. In fact, in this moment, I am at least speaking for one of the neighbors that I had talked to right adjacent to myself. Curve Street is known for having, and this is something that I've brought up to the board and to the previous town administrator, at least for three years. It is known for having a large volume of people taking the wrong way. It is a one-way street and a lot of cars take in the wrong way. Also, a lot of people speed through this street because it's a cut-over street on, on the light on 126. So it's really just a matter of time before two of these vehicles collide head-on and we have an nasty act. It happens a lot. I see it all the time. It happens a lot, I see it all the time. A car is going to park at the Crafted lot, it's full. They just take a right, take it in and park down there at Aesop's Fable Parking Lot, get out, go buy their beer and come back in and leave. And it happens all the time, especially Friday night, Saturday night, when it's a busy time and the parking lot is full. This doesn't necessarily mean it's something that Ken is responsible for or he can necessarily do something. I think it is unfortunately the town that can help solve this problem. But as long as we have this problem, I don't think that it is, I would not recommend to increase in any shape, way or form the vehicular and pedestrian traffic here. That adds up to the other problem we were saying before. And I have sent an email earlier this week to all the town, uh, board members, town administrator and other people about the situation that we live in East Holliston. We're basically locked in with the snow. It refers to the previous problem. But as long as Ken's landlord keeps blocking the sidewalks with, when he shovels the snow, right now, the things I have seen this week of people going back and forth trying to kill themselves, walking to and from the liquor store is just insane. It is just a matter of somebody getting hurt. There is the stairway that leads from one place to the other, which the landlord has constantly opposed to shoveling, cleaning or anything. He actually solved it yesterday by closing it, by actually boarding it instead of cleaning it, forcing people to walk down the other side, take the long way around on the sidewalk, which thank God was open. It was the sidewalks open because we literally stopped the car, the little bulldozer that cleans the sidewalks and asked them to please clean that corner. So this is really a situation that I don't feel is safe. And as long as this unsafe situation is there and as long as we cannot have any idea of how we are gonna deal with this and the nuisance situation of the lights, we don't really support it. Even though we think Ken is a wonderful business person, he has done everything in his power to make sure that this is, this happens.
Thank you. Um, let me just see if Ken is available now. Ken, we've tried to loop you in when the hearing started.
Yes, I'm here now. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get coverage at the shop, I was with a customer.
Gotcha, all right. So we have opened a hearing, uh, we heard from Mr. Vargas. Um, at this point, we'll allow you to, uh, introduce your request to the town and hopefully, address some of the things you might have just heard if you have time.
I, uh, I unfortunately, uh, didn't hear what Andres had to say.
Uh, well, let me summarize it. Mr. Vargas is in a butter, he showered you with compliments as a business owner, but he's got some concerns as a homeowner with, uh, lights from idling vehicles shining into his home while they're patronizing your business. He's also got some concerns with your landlord's ability to keep certain pathways for pedestrians open, clear and safe and additional traffic, uh, coming in and going out of your parking lot, uh, impacting the light cycle at, uh, in East Holliston. He said he's had some conversations with you, he respects you enormously but does not support, uh, this request at this time for things that appear to be beyond your control, maybe more related to your landlord. Mr. Vargas, if I've misstated anything, feel free to correct me, but I think that summarized your concerns.
No, you summarized it great. The only thing I would add is the fact of the vehicles coming in the wrong way on Curve Street. Mostly just to park, just a little corner there to park.
Gotcha. Okay, Ken, so go ahead, your floor is yours.
Um, so I, I have had conversations with my landlord, um, regarding his concerns. Um, we're kinda, uh, working on a, possibly, uh, some sort of solution for the, um, the lights, um, in the, in the parking lot. Um, with regard to the pedestrian walkway, the stairs that go from the upper parking lot to the lower parking lot, um, my landlord, um, he, he did put up a barrier, um, uh, this past weekend, um, blocking, um, people from using the stairway, uh, up and down because they aren't cleared and he does not want them cleared. Um, he, he's been unwilling to salt the stairs. Um, I guess because salt is gonna leach minerals or some, something out of the concrete. I'm a little unclear as to why, um, both, both myself and, um, and Andrew from Aesop's Fable have been, have relayed willingness to, uh, you know, keep the stairs cleared without salt. Um, now, that being said, it is a little bit of a liability without salt because those, they can ice up pretty much without warning on a, on a winter night. Um, so he doesn't want them used while there is snow there. Um, and I, I, I don't have any say in it unfortunately. Um, the town did clear, as you, as I'm sure you all know, um, the, uh, the corner and the, and the sidewalk that goes around Curve Street down to Aesop's Fable from us. Um, so that is vastly superior to the situation before when people, I really didn't know how to get down there from the upper parking lot. Um, now at least, it, um, it's, it's a viable option to walk on the street or on, on the sidewalk, as it were. Um, and then with regard to the one-way signs, um, I, if, if, I, I didn't hear exactly what went back and forth between all of you, but, um, I mean, I, I'd be willing to, to lend my voice to whatever helps get some clearer signage, um, if that's called for certainly. Um, but, uh, beyond that, it's, that's not even on my landlord's property, so I really don't have any say about it. Does that, does that address everything?
Uh, at least from your perspective, I think you've done that. Um, if I could ask at this time for board members to bring forth their questions, we'll start with Mr. Sparrow, any questions?
Um, I think the only question actually, um, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, I think this is, uh, you know, town meeting had approved this, so I think we're just sort of going through, at this point, some of the formality, I think. Um, but I think my question, um, is to be, as actually for Tina, um, have, have you received any, uh, requests about that intersection for signage or?
Right.
Changes from the, to the tax?
No, so let me just, um, speak directly to Mr. Vargas. Uh, I would encourage you and your, your neighbors to, I, I checked, we haven't received any petitions from, um, residents on Curve Street to date. But in terms of your concern about signage and, uh, the problem with cars going down a one-way or the wrong way, I would encourage you, direct you to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Um, I have your email address, you can certainly email me if you, you cannot find it, but it's on the town website, it's the Traffic Advisory Committee. You submit a petition, uh, you will eventually end up most likely with a hearing and you can share your concerns and also the recommendations that you and your neighbors would have for solving that particular, um, issue. Um, I think you find that, um, a committee of nine people, including, uh, residents of the town and public safety officials, that's the right place to go for, um, that particular concern.
Okay, great.
You good?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think everything else, I mean, I think it's, you know, uh, pretty straightforward and it's just a change to the, uh, the license, so I don't have any other questions. Tina?
Um, I, I have a bunch of questions. Uh, I know that there's another stairwell that separates, uh, the block of buildings that Crafted and Aesop's Fable is in with VirtuChis and, um, Gitanos Bakery. And I know that between those two buildings, there's a stairwell. I know that stairwell is covered. I'm wondering if it is the same landlord for both buildings, Ken? Do you happen to know?
I do actually, Tina.
Oh, okay, yep.
It is a different landlord, that is Mr. Joseph Gayet. And we have our own set of problems with that stairway, even if it's open. Unfortunately, Mr. Gayet has dumped thirty feet of snow between his property and the other on Curve Street, actually blocking the sidewalk, the street and the storm drain. So anybody who wants to go that way around has to actually go on the street and once again, a very dangerous situation.
Yeah.
I appreciate, by the way, giving me the info on the traffic advisory. I will definitely submit it formally through the Traffic Advisory Committee. But once again, it is under a very dangerous situation that we live in right now, so we need to solve these situations before we move forward.
I understand the urgency. So I, you know, it sounds like there's a bit of a precedent down there in that block of not having to clear, not, uh, making the choice to clear, uh, stairwells. This sounds like something the building inspector would have a role in addressing. Um, in turn, so one of the questions I have, and it's either for, for Ken or for, um, Mr. Vargas, but if the parking on the lower level is attributed to the businesses on the top level, if you don't provide access to that parking lot on the lower level, uh, that seems like a, a failure. So if the landlord has access to the parking in order to allow a business to, to operate on the upper level, it seems that there's an implicit, explicit responsibility to keep that accessway open. So I would be looking for the building inspector to weigh in on that issue, um.
I have quite a bit of back and forth with the previous building inspector. Um, I don't know if the, I don't know if all of that has been relayed to the incoming building inspector. Um, a lot of the concerns from Mr. Vargas that were previously expressed to my predecessor have been expressed to me, I've, I've had numerous conversations, um, with Mr. Vargas and, um, I, I think that when it comes specific to the question of the building inspector getting involved in clearing of steps, I know that I have not seen that conversation, so I will certainly follow up, um, with Mark Caffeline and make sure that he's read in on all of what Chris Kenny has, um, previously had with conversations, uh, with the landlords in this block as it pertains to Mr. Vargas's issues.
Okay, um.
And the, not the neighbors, not simply Mr. Vargas, obviously. This is, in fact, the entire, uh, uh, area right there.
The question of enforcement of private plows, I, I don't know, uh, where, uh, being honest, I don't know where we go. I know that we ought to address it, but I don't know where we would go to address that. So again, it sounds like the landlord is, is, um, using a private plow service and perhaps there's a breakdown in communication or expectations that the private plow driver is not being mindful or respectful of, of town property and that sidewalks and roadways are being impacted by the plow. So I don't know the, the correct process by which the landlord communicates clearly with accountability to the private plow driver, so that's the situation changes. I was down there, um, at Aesop's Fable on Sunday, I know exactly what they're talking about in terms of lack of access, poor access and needing to walk out in the streets. It was better by Sunday, but you could easily see what Saturday had looked like. Um, and, uh, so, I don't know, again, the correct process to get that communication going and, um...
Uh, Ms. Heim, thank you so much for having come in on Saturday and seen firsthand the issue. Um, just to add to that, I have spoken to both landlords on some occasions and I have asked them not to do this, not to block these sidewalks. Their answer has been usually the same, well, what do I do with the snow? Unfortunately, that is their problem and that's why they make a lot of money off of their properties. And anybody who runs a business knows that they need to come up with the answers for this, not their neighbors who are being impacted by it. And in, for a completely different reason, on a lighting issue that I have with Mr. Gayet, we came to a conversation of the snow, I pointed it out to him and he had committed with me personally to talk to his plow drivers to make sure he didn't block these accidents. So I know that that conversation has happened already. I don't know if it was a miscommunication, but they did it again because they do it every year, but...
I can certainly follow, um, I would say, obviously, as it pertains to this particular public hearing, um, that I would follow up outside of that.
I was just gonna recommend, or I'll call us from your office because these business owners might have some more force behind it. And I think it's time to do that. Um, as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, beginning of the winter, so notice to them now to play by the rules and I think Mr. Vargas is spot on. If you're a pri- private business owner, you have to solve your private business problem without impacting the public way, so, pretty straightforward to me. Are you good?
Okay, no, thank you.
Uh, Ken, I just have a couple of questions for you on your application. It sounds like you've had some discussions both with the butters, Mr. Vargas for one, and your landlord about some of the challenges that you might have with the growing business up there. Um, what kind of progress are you making with your landlord to help land this new expanded business opportunity in a way that doesn't negatively impact, um, your neighbors, uh, both commercial and, uh, personal and private property owners?
Um, so, I mean, I, I guess I would frame it to you as this, we're, we're simply expanding our, the, our, the products available. Um, I don't think we're looking at a tremendous uptick in traffic, uh, to the shop, but more of a, a value add for the people that do come to the shop. Um, and I, and with regard to like, I, I would say more typical concerns of litter with, uh, nips and plastic pint bottles and whatnot, um, that's nothing that we deal in nor will ever deal in. Um, we, we're far more of a boutique shop, as, as you may know, if you've been in and whatnot. Um, we, we don't have a fishbowl full of nips next to the register, um, and nothing like that. So, um, I don't, I don't view any immedi-, I, I don't, I don't view any even long-term change to, um, uh, the, the quality of, of life of any of our butters based on this.
I, I believe I did not get a clear answer on your landlord's readiness to install a fence.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So cut, go ahead if you want to address that item.
Um, so I mean, our, my, my preliminary discussion with him has not been favorable. Um, I, uh, I, I, I will certainly revisit it. Um, but there, there's only so much leverage that I have with him. Um, if, I, I, I don't know by, through, through what process the town, uh, corresponds with him, but I, I think, I, I truthfully think you guys would have more sway, um, over what, what he does than, than I would, um, or, or Mr. Vargas, for that matter.
So if I could just pivot real quick to you, Travis. Um, by approving any, uh, expansion in this case of a liquor license for a business, um, our board still controls day-to-day activities of the, uh, license environment. If there are any problems with that performance, we, we, do we, can't speak, do we reserve the right to revoke or suspend the license until such time as the problem is remedied?
As it relates to, um, the way that the licensure is granted under A. B. C. C. regulations, I'm not sure when it comes to the fence, if, if that's the, the direction.
Well, right, if we feel as though what we're doing is giving a business, uh, the benefit of this licensure and they're not, for some reason, living up to their end of the bargain, whether it's serving to minors or some other violation, do we reserve the right to haul them in, suspend the license or call them to fix the problem?
Absolutely, as it pertains to those things, right, uh, the serving, serving to minors.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm not seeing the connection to the fence specifically, but for other items of that nature, absolutely.
Well, I mean, if Mr. Onoffrey is having difficulty with his landlord to improve the, the lot for the benefit of your butters, so that they don't see any negative impact from this, and we come back in six months and Mr. Vargas has pictures and problems and, and continuing complaint, I'd like to be able to say, at this point, we have to do something to leverage our authority to make sure the business is being a good neighbor.
Understood.
It's a very condensed area and I, Ken, you know that. I mean, you guys are very, very close to one another and I, and I think we all have to, uh, sympathize with any abutting neighbor. And it sounds like you and, and Andres have a great relationship, thank God for that, but let's continue to make it so going forward. And while I'm, I'm sympathetic to the expansion of your business, um, I also wanna be mindful of the neighbor's impact. So tonight, just passing us off to your landlord, to me, isn't the right way to go about it. I, I think you have to go in with a heavy hand to your landlord and say, "I, I need this benefit in order to function responsibly or I'm not gonna be able to move forward." Is that doable?
I'm, with, with all due respect, and I mean that very sincerely, um, my landlord's business and my business are two separate entities. Um, I...
Okay, so can you put up a fence?
I can, but it's on my landlord's property. I can't build on my landlord's property without his permission. Does, I, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I, I don't, I don't wanna spend too much time delving on this issue. I guess the point is, if we find down the road that the, the quiet enjoyment of your neighbors is being impacted, we're gonna have to take some actions, Ken.
Um, understood. I, I mean, the situation hasn't changed at all though, like, it, there, there isn't... No, no, I'll, I'll take that back, I, I understand.
Any other questions on the applicant for, uh, the expansion of liquor license?
I do not have questions for the applicant. I, I would say, John, I, you know, my first thought about vehicular and pedestrian traffic and the increase in sales struck me as, as not being... and the increase in sales struck me as, as not being necessarily inherently what the board is being asked to consider tonight with this hearing on the license for an all alcohol package store. If the hearing was on a business residential neighborhood issue, then I would agree a hundred percent that the comments to Ken need to land. I still think, can they need to land? I just am drawing a little bit of a distinction in the issue of increased traffic and the challenges and the problems that brings for your neighbors and the, the point of the all alcohol package store license that you're applying for. I, I'm gonna come back again for Travis here, whether or not this is something that, this particular issue of cars in the parking lot and the challenges and problems it's posing for the neighbors, if that's not under the building inspector, that that doesn't sit in another department to address. And it's separate from the actual conversation that this hearing is about, which is, which is the license. I'm not disagreeing at all, though, with, with Mr. Vargas's concerns. I absolutely think they need to be addressed. And I do know every year we give you new licenses and I could absolutely see this being a part of a conversation with any license, how are things going and the board having some very strong opinions on it. I just don't agree that in considering this particular license, what's happening in the parking lot with, with traffic and lights is, is germane to the, to the decision about the license. Picking at straws here, but again, I'm gonna push this over to the building inspector and look for a solution out of that office for the challenges that's happening, that are happening out there in the parking lot.
Very good.
So, sorry, I would ask a question. If those aren't the kind of concerns we would be looking for, then what exactly would the concerns be like?
I think we're talking, I think to Mr. Hearn's point about the behaviors of an all alcohol package store. So selling to minors, the selling outside of hours, the selling to intoxicated individuals. That is my understanding of what this board does when it reviews an all alcohol package store. Is, is that owner acting responsibly with that license in terms again of this sale?
Why would, why would we have received this Butters' invitation to be? Not clear to me, sorry.
Well, that's the thing, the, look, and by the way, I don't disagree with any of the comments that you're making. And I, I'm gonna look for and, and, you know, expect resolution to, to the issues that you bring up. But I think that if you were, if a resident was here presenting concerns about the behavior of customers when they exit the store, when they enter the store, the behavior associated with the purchase and off, what is it called? Off, off premise sale, on, off premise, all alcohol off premises. If there was a concern about behavior of clients, then, then I think that's incredibly relevant for this particular type of conversation as regards to the license. But again, I'm not dismissing or diminishing your concerns about the parking lot. I, I don't need to do that.
No, I mean, I understand that. I'm just a little concerned that once this license is fully there, I lose all leverage in this conversation. And knowing the landlord, I've known him for three years, he's not gonna move a finger to solve this issue, to help us with anything. So I'm just feel like I'm losing the only leverage that I have in this situation. And for me, unfortunately, how somebody sits there with the lights pointing at my house for fifteen, twenty minutes is the behavior of somebody as they exit the store and enter. When somebody takes the wrong way just because there was no parking and they don't, they disregard everything, it is the behavior of the client entering. So that, there is some behavior issue.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Any final comments, Ken? Are you good at this point for, for us to move forward?
Uh, yes.
Okay, any comments then?
I think the only comment I would have is, I kind of agree with Ms. Heine. I mean, I, I do sort of see from that perspective. I think that the issue, the issue I have is, I mean, I certainly respect the fact that it stinks to have, you know, lights flashing, shining into your house. But I think the problem would not be diminished if the, the residence, the, the business was different. I think, you know, if it was a restaurant, you might have, you're gonna have the same issues. If it was a, you know, that's, that's the only point I want to make, is I don't think it's germane to the, to the license. That's just my personal opinion. So I do think, you know, we, we might have to look at other avenues. And we want to make sure that we can fix it, helping with this issue if it's at all possible.
Ken, your hours are not, hours of operation are not changing under this design, are they?
They are not. Very well. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the transfer or expansion, excuse me, of a change of license from wine and malt to all alcohol package store. I will like that motion.
Uh, I will second that.
You're good? I thought you were gonna make a comment there.
Uh, it's a comment I've already made about the building inspector's office, so not relevant.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, that carries. Thank you, folks. All right, now I want to entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Still moved?
In a second.
I will second that with my comment, which is to Mr. Vargas that I, I will follow up through the town administrator's office with the building inspector to make sure that all avenues of communication, of steps and measures with the, the property owner, the landlord in this case, are, are explored, communicated through Ken, with Ken, to see that your concerns are addressed.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you. We'll move on. Let's move back to the item involving FY twenty-two budget discussion that we took a pass on at seven thirty. Mr. Hearn, to revisit, I believe you were informing us about the steps taken to inform the department heads of the upcoming FY twenty-two budget process.
Yes.
And unless you had any other blanks to fill in, I think some of the members of the board had some questions for you.
Nope.
You're good, we'll start with you, Ben.
All right, so I got a couple of things. As everyone knows, I was on the finance committee, so I have an interesting, sort of an interesting perspective on some of these things. But a couple of things that I wanna, I'd like us to look at as a town and be thinking about as we go forward with this process. And then one of them that we talked about and I've heard this board talk about before is, is free cash. Because I feel like, and I don't know, I mean, I've certainly seen other towns that have certainly larger free cash numbers as percentage of their omnibus budget. But to me, it feels like having, you know, we had three million dollars, we've had close to three million dollars, I don't remember the exact number from last year, but it was a pretty substantial amount of money. And my question is, is are we engaging in some practices or doing some things that are increasing those numbers? Can we do something to help to mitigate some of that, that free cash? And, and the answer might be no, to a certain extent. But I think, to me, there's two issues that come up with, with the, with the issue of free cash. You're either, you have more revenue than you expect, or you're more efficient and prudent in your spending. To me, those are probably the two main drivers. I mean, I could be...
Revenue's over assumption and actual spending below budget.
Right. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that actual spending for budget is probably not gonna be the driver in a, in some cases. I mean, there could be a few, there could be a few of the large drivers that, you know, like benefits and things like that sometimes can be the, the source of those things. But I would argue that a lot of it is coming from some of our revenue assumptions. So we sometimes can be a little conservative in those assumptions. And I'd like to see us be a little bit more, like try to be, and I don't, I don't have a problem with being conservative, but I want to make sure that we're being conservative from the aspect of prediction. And, and using, and as opposed to, as opposed to sort of like, you know, feeling that this is the right way. Like, what happened in the last recession? What happened in the last time that things were closer to this? So we can get closer to some data points that can give, that can drive us to, to have a better idea. Like, what did we do in the last couple of years or whatever, whatever happens to be. So I guess that's my first issue, is can we make, maybe, working to maybe have a little bit better predictive analytics to determine what could be closer to what we would expect for some of those numbers? Is that possible? And the answer might be no, but I'd like to...
No, I, the answer is, is yes, right? So I guess part of, part of the issue when it comes to estimating revenue is, you know, I, I think the way that you just worded that, my only concern is that your, your intention is to not have free cash, right? I mean, for a small town, free cash to a certain extent becomes our own, some of our own flexibility, right?
Yes.
Stabilization is the plan flexibility and the, the free cash, as we saw at this, excuse me, special town meeting, was used to, to do some of the sort of one-time projects, the studies and those types of things, right? So I think if the question is how much free cash you want to generate, right, as a plan, that certainly a conversation should be had on an annual basis, absolutely. And, and the, the assumptions for revenue, generally speaking, for a town this size, are going to be the ways that you are able to impact that.
Yeah. And I mean, I know we have a policy to use free cash as mostly to keep it away from operations, to keep it for one-time expenses whenever possible. And I know some other communities, what they do is they encourage, some communities, they encourage some of their departments to be more prudent in their spending because the free cash can be sometimes how some projects are funded. So if people are always overspending or spending close to their budget, then there's less free cash and there's less opportunity to spend on other things. So I, I just think we should have, I'd like to see us have a little bit more of a concerted approach and understanding of what we're doing with free cash. I'm not saying we should find, I'm not fond of us with it. I'm not saying we should do anything prudent with it. But I just sort of think, I, I think we should have a little bit, a conversation about how we handle it and are we making some assumptions that are leading to it that we could perhaps change that might make things a little bit, a little bit more effective and efficient. So that was the first thing. So I apologize if I monopolized a little bit of time there.
All right.
So the second thing that I, I wanted to address is stabilization. Is, you know, I was going back to sort of see, understand, you know, when do we use stabilization? One of the opportunities to use stabilization. This sort of leads a little bit to the free cash conversation, but I think we can be a little bit conservative in our approaches to some of our revenue discussions. We generate free cash and a lot of times the reason for being, for being conservative is to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we have to make nine-dead cuts in the spring. So we're not, we're not having, it's always easier to add back in than it is to sort of take out, just to put ourselves in that position. But to me, that, that, that protection is already sort of there with the stabilization fund if we're doing our jobs correctly. And, and that sort of, I, I'd like to sort of have some understanding of how we should approach and think about the stabilization fund, instead of it just being this fund that we stash money in and we never want to address or look at using ever. And I'm not saying it's sort of the tendency of, hey, let's just go dip into it to go, you know, pay for something extravagant. But I am saying that I think we could be a little bit more, we could be a little less conservative in some of our approaches when it comes to revenue generation. And then maybe we can have, if there are some things that come through suddenly, which is what stabilization is there for, for emergencies, for disasters, for things that were not expected in a, in a grand way, and then we have that flexibility. I know we use stabilization to shore up the reserve fund in July partially because we weren't sure about what was gonna happen with the October town meetings. We wanted to make sure that we had a little bit of financial flexibility in the fall in the event we didn't have that town meeting to be able to move, move the money when we needed to. So that's sort of my, my second piece, my second thing. The third thing, and I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again, I want to say it in public way, is that I get concerned, I heard the finance committee's conversation. I do, my Wednesday viewing for, for me is to have a cup of coffee and to watch the finance committee from the previous night. So I watched, I do watch that. People say I'm a blessing for punishment, I probably am. But one of the things that I hear about is talking about the guidelines. And when it comes to guidelines for the budget for the department. Now, I understand we're not gonna talk about COLA because we still don't know what the feds are gonna do. We're still kind of up in the air. Who knows what's gonna happen in the future? But one of the things that I'm, I get very concerned about, I'm trying to tread lightly with some of my rhetoric here, but I think in the past, we've had, we've kept non-union personnel salaries down. And I feel like that has subsidized union raises. And I don't think that's fair.
I completely agree.
I think we need to do a better job handling our non-union personnel. People in this building work very hard as well. And just because they're not in union doesn't mean they don't deserve to be compensated in a reasonable way. And I think that we need to do a better job. I know, you know, as we see our workforce gather more institutional knowledge, we want to make sure that we're also attracting new employees and make sure that we have the right packages and pay rates and things like that and raises that are appropriate so we can get good people, we can keep good people, and we can make sure that as the future holds, you know, people potentially leaving or moving on, that the institutional knowledge doesn't fade away because we didn't have a good... Sure. So I, I'd like to see, to make sure that we're not, we're being fair to the people that are not union in this town. And I think it's very important. And they're just as important as anyone else and they deserve to be compensated.
And I was, I was very, to that point, I was very appreciative of this board's support, finance committee's support and the town meeting's support for making the adjustment mid-year when, when more information was prepared. And just to reiterate, as, as the budget message that went out to department heads today, is that not assuming any amount right now for COLA is not assuming that the COLA would be zero. It is specifically saying to assume right now would not be in the best interest of employees and that more information is needed for everybody before that decision is made. So I hope that that message is, is received. But I appreciate also that, that perspective and I'm sure the employees do as well.
So, and my last piece is, I'd like to see us, we did an exercise for the, for the bond rating of trying to put out like a five-year projection for revenues or spending, things like that. Sort of putting something together like that. And I'd like to see us have a little bit more of a long-term thought process. And I'm not, and I'm gonna ask the question here, is it, is that something prudent or possible with some departments as well? Is to sort of start thinking about like, if you know something's coming up down the road, beyond capital. I mean, obviously, capital is sort of like isolated as something that we do that with. But I'm just thinking about like, you know, down the road, I know I'm gonna need a blah, blah, blah. You know, a good example would be the facilities manager as he's expanding some of his, some of the things with, with what he's doing with potentially, and according to the, the business plan that John put together, included things like, you know, taking over Parks and Rec and potentially, you know, having conversations with other departments as well that are outside of his purview. And, you know, thinking about those kinds of things, you know, what could that look like? And of course, this is just sort of thinking a little bit beyond things. But I just would like to sort of see us start to think about things more long-term and understanding the ramifications of sometimes doing something now, what are the ramifications of that longer term? You know, like an example would be, hey, if we add a, a hundred thousand dollar a year person in, into a, into a department, you know, what does that look like for the department long-term versus the COLAs and all sorts of things like that?
If I could dive in real quick, it sounds like part of a conversation we had some months ago about master plan versus strategic plan.
Sure.
That sounds more like a strategic plan. What do you strategically envision occurring over the next several years?
Right.
How do you pulse it into your operating budget and so forth? So I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
We don't do that right now.
We don't do that. And I think we should be doing that, you know, we talk about like, you know, water and highway, you know, thinking about that. We can also be thinking about that, like what are they doing, you know? For example, like when we talked about Winter Street, we had to save up a little bit of money to get enough money for the water to be able to do that because it was a little bit, it was a little more expensive and it was a little bit more turf. But we can be thinking about some of those things long-term. So I just think we should, I'd like to see us thinking, to your point, more strategically, a little more long-term. It's, it's...
So the, the output that SMP would expect to see, which we don't have currently, and is something, you know, as I mentioned with the, the documents gone out here with the five-year capital request form as the, the, the capital tracking that was passed from, from you and the finance committee to, to me and has been discussed with the capital subcommittee. A five-year capital improvement program is a document that SMP and, and anybody in any town should have. It's just the basic.
Yes.
It's one that you could argue that we have, but in reality, it's certainly not the format that SMP would expect to see when you go into a COLA. The other thing that, that we don't have that we need to put in place, and it might be a little bumpy to start, but once we get into it, is, is certainly doable, is a three-year budget to revenue projection, right? We know that some of the, for example, revenue related to marijuana growers and agreements that have been put in place are gonna begin to taper off. We know that revenue related to the solar project at Marshall Field is gonna begin to grow. We can plan those things on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we have a debt plan. And when we know that a pro, a project is coming up that we're gonna bond, we can project that service and put that into a three-year projection. You can certainly go five years. I find that to be...
Three or five years, longer than...
The assumptions begin to degrade the further out you go.
Sure.
We can plan based on history of increases to our, to our benefits budget, where we'll be for certain fixed costs. And then anytime, obviously, we make changes that, that impact that, it either can, you know, it can significantly impact your three-year output, but every year you update it. So both of those two things, I would say, to your point, certainly should be, or will be introduced in this budget cycle and are things that this town...
Yeah. And I, and I think part of that would also be being able to, you know, one of the ways we show the goals that we have as a community is to sort of see what our budget priorities are in, in terms of... budget priorities are. And in terms of, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, capital planning and things like that. Well, let's put our money where our mouth is and let's actually like try to start planning out what that looks like on a high level, you know. You know, and I realize that's deeper conversation. There's more, other boards that have to get involved, but at the same time, I think we need to be starting to think about how that stuff works and thinking about strategically planning our budget in a much more holistic fashion because I think it is important for us to be looking at the, at the document as a whole and as a community as opposed, and, and seeing sometimes it might be, hey, we got to move a little more here, hey, we got to move a little more there. And we need to be thinking about these things on a grander scale. So that's one of the reasons I am very happy that you're here, Travis, because I feel like you can, you can, you can help us with some of those things in this town. So those are my comments.
Great feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've been writing like a crazy person over here. I...
You want more paper?
What's this?
Get more paper.
It wasn't me.
No, no, no. So I'm writing down what Ben's saying. I'm writing down my reactions to what Ben's saying. I'm writing down thoughts that have been in my mind. And then you go and say three-year budget to revenue projection. And I think that's exactly what I would say that I am looking for. They, as they look at all the comments that I had previous to that statement that you just made, I, yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking at. I mean, it's very clear to me, as new as I am to this, this world here of municipal finance, I'm no idiot when it comes to this stuff. So not being familiar with all the levers and mechanisms involved by no means implies that I don't understand what's going on. And what I'm very acutely aware of is that this budget process is, this budget process we're about to start is much, a part of a much bigger dynamic financial process. And it ought to be guided by our financial policies. We have them in writing. I think sometimes we go far astray of what those policies actually require us to do. We get feedback most recently from S and P in their bond report that they gave to us back in the February of 2020. There are suggestions and recommendations in there that we can source. We have NMA guidance. We have all sorts of places to go to, to help, you know, with this dynamic financial process. But yes, a three-year budget to revenue forecast production, I think, is a key, key piece of this. So that then brings me to a question for you and an ask of you. You, in your email about how you saw the FY22 budget process starting, you had said that the message today is a level service budget. That does not mean or equate to a zero percent budget. I believe if I read your comments correctly, and I'm asking for clarification on this, that is at this point in time while we await clarification from the state and the federal government. Is that what you mean? So when we get that clarification, this will likely change? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
I think included in, in the comment was sort of anything to increase level, above level service, right, for a new service or an expansion of service should certainly be brought forward. But under the guise that if, if information does not break our way, 22 would be a difficult time to consider those. The other thing to, that I pointed out in there is that if, if it were a new service level related specific to COVID, that's something that we need to know. And then if it is, you know, one thing that I want all departments to be considering is whether or not COVID has sort of impacted the way that the services are being provided. And that's going to impact sort of years to come. Or if, you know, people are looking at 21 and 20, FY22 as, you know, this is to get us through COVID and then things will go back quote unquote to normal. I think people need to be thinking of whether or not COVID has impacted, you know, how their, how their service level looks and how their departments look. And then I think a lot of that is going to probably play into our discussion with the IT director and, and some other things that are, you know, a lot of our departments need support internally, more so than they did in the past. And, you know, we need to plan ahead for all those things. So to answer your question, yes, I think depending on news from the federal government, the state government, the picture could change.
Okay.
I don't know, you know, I think either way, departments probably need to be looking at their budgets and saying, what does it cost to continue to provide the same level of service? And if I, if I, you know, feel the need to, to request an increased level of service, to segregate that from their request, to explain what it is and make sure that it's being understood. And when more information is available, that decision can be made.
Okay, okay. And then my ask, and it's, you know, maybe it's not a literal ask, but just in this conversation right now, Ben was talking about non-union salary versus union salary. When I go through the budgets, when I open up the school's budget as well, if I had to guess, I'd put in union salaries for the town of Holliston at around 20 million and I'd put non-union salary at around a million. So to Ben's comment about this board advocating for the compensation to salary of our non-union town employees, I do see that there is much bigger massed volume of employees who fall under the union than the non-union. And so I, I wouldn't, I, I think that's a, I guess there's no ask to that except maybe confirmation that I'm in the right ballpark there with my numbers. But what I'm particularly curious about, because I hear this when we start talking about salaries, is this need to understand the retirement benefits, that municipal employees receive retirement benefits that are unique and different from other, other industries and so on. And so on my ask is, you know, where to go for that information so that when I'm thinking about and talking about salaries, that piece is in my mind. How, where do you go to calculate out what that retirement benefit is for employees, say, of five years, of 15 years, of 30 years? Because it is a part of the conversation. I've just not been a part of those conversations where this detail is provided.
Sure. And so I, I did sit down, so I was, I was the administrator of the Danvers Retirement System. We had our own retirement system. The town of Holliston is within the Middlesex Retirement System, a regional system. Mary Bosquette or myself would be the people who are sort of most adept to answer any of those questions. I guess what I would say is that, you know, the way that it has been structured over years, that every, every time statute changes, people get, I don't know if there's a non-gendered way to say this, grandfathered in? Is it, I don't know if that's been changed at all the time.
Trickledated. I think it's trickledated in.
Okay. And so, right, so for example, I'm in nine plus two, meaning that I pay nine percent of my salary up to $30,000 and nine plus two over $30,000. You know, that's me entering the system after 1992. And so an employee before that would have paid a different amount into the system and, and was, you know, and so all of that is related to schedules and then all of that plays into the schedule that would indicate at what level the, the public employee retires at and is compensated for their pension system. I think one thing that generally gets overlooked is that our employees don't pay into social security. So if the pension system were to be defunct, which is why Massachusetts cannot allow that to happen, our employees have not paid into social security. So there's quite a bit that goes into that conversation.
Yeah, totally correctly.
And so I'd be happy to sit down and talk with any of those things. But it is interesting because, right, I think people don't necessarily understand the fact that it used to be the salaries in, in the public sector were generally low, the benefits were considered high, right? The benefits when it comes to health insurance and the pension system were, were so great when you were paying 5% at third times. So paying nine plus two, so to speak, for a new employee of their salary and then, you know, our, our health benefits are what they are, they're no longer all that competitive with the private sector, that it is, you know, that's why you've seen salaries in the, in the public sector increase because those benefits have sort of, the, the balance of those two things has, has sort of changed.
Tina, I, so the workbook that the finance committee uses, I built it for them. So one of the things it does is it separates non-union and union. And I did a calculation FY21. So there was about $32.2 million in union salaries and $3.7 million in non-union.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that.
You're good. Okay, thanks. Travis, just a couple of things for you. As we know, the governance committee is seated. They're studying our form of government, how it is. I know they're examining also the relationship between the bylaws and your special lack. As we begin the FY22 process, I just wanted to confirm with you that you feel as though you, right now you are embracing your authority to compile within a fixed time in agreement with the Select and the FinCom, the comprehensive annual operating budget and the annual capital improvements program for all town departments, agencies, boards, commissions, and submit the same with your recommendation to the FinCom.
Yes.
Last week, along with Ben, I watched the finance committee and I saw some discussions about revenue modeling. And I heard some remarks that current revenue modeling shows the town precariously balanced between its current needs and projected revenue. Can you inform us tonight what was missing from that revenue model? What, what did they not include in their bottom line for FY22 projections?
So one of the things that I had provided to you and them was the idea that solar would be coming, but I did not include it in mine and they didn't include it. And also, I think there was a difference of how, you know, how to approach state aid, I would say, was probably the biggest difference as well when it comes to revenue.
Those differences were substantial.
Yeah, combined probably $800,000.
$800,000. How are those items going to be reconciled in time for us to begin planning the FY22 budget process?
I think as I stated, you know, when we sit down with our initial meeting, I'll probably be giving you an overview of where I see revenue and, and we'll have to as a group, you know, discuss what you feel comfortable with going ahead. And then you can use that to inform the decisions that, that you make as you review budgets. At the end of the day, if that is not, you know, if, if the revenue assumptions are not at least shrewd up to a certain extent as we approach town meeting, I think we'll have to decide how to approach budgets that are sort of presented to town meeting that may not look the same. But at the same point, you know, a lot of information is going to come out. And I think the reason I'm saying we should, we should sort of wait on some of this is that we'll know more on state aid when we know more from the feds. And so it, it may be that over time, we're all using new assumptions based on more information and, and that will true up and it may not. And we'll have to address that as we go.
I, I could not have said things more articulately than Ben did earlier on his four points. I completely concur with everything, everything you said, from free cash to the way we evaluate our FY22 budget, Travis. And one of the things that, you know, I appreciate the conservative budgeting approach. That's how I was trained. That's how you perform your budget analysis. But one of the things that I found refreshing was listening to Ms. Heine last week speak to the finance committee about being excited to look forward to the FY22 budget process. This, this is a renewed view of how we're preparing a budget. I don't want to disparage anybody, but your skill set is completely different than the one of your predecessor. This board hasn't had your skill set in quite some time and it's a pleasure to work with somebody who can give a perspective that the town hasn't had in five years. And I think, you know, as I listened to Tina talk to the finance committee, that's exactly what my perspective was. We now have the benefit of a, of a full-time financial expert giving the town great advice and, and guidance for the long-term that will survive elected officials. And I think that by itself is worthy of some note going forward. And I would hope other boards and commissions take note as well that you are a resource to them. As Ben talked about free cash, and we've had that conversation as well, I've asked a lot about, you know, doing an organic review of where the free cash is emanating from. I know you've already done that. You can see some areas where maybe some conservative budgeting got away from us. But there's also the question, not to be resolved tonight, but why does the town raise and appropriate $1.4 million for capital spending every fall? That money is for operating use. Should we be examining the potential use of bond anticipatory notes or some other borrowing mechanism to fund some measure or some amount of our annual fall town meeting expenditures? I believe it's a best practice in many governments and municipalities, we don't do it. Instead, we cannibalize our base budget to buy fire trucks and to put a 5 million, excuse me, $500,000 artificial turf on a high school. In my opinion, those are things that should be bonded. Those are long-term investments. Should we be looking at those types of changes to the way we budget? Your thoughts?
I think it is unusual to fund the capital expenditure fund through a raise and appropriate. At the same point, I think it is probably put the town in, given the opportunity potentially to pursue borrowing capacity within the levy, which is something that, that the town of Danvers, as I, as I look back, right, the town of Danvers did all this borrowing within the tax levy. There was no override. Then there's towns like Weston that do overrides for every single thing that they borrow for and they borrow for everything. And then there's all the towns in between that sort of fall in that spectrum, right? And so I think at this point, the town can look ahead and essentially say, we have capacity to build in debt service to be paid through the budget because at this point, there's over a million, point four, 1.4 million dollars in there that's just going into the fund that then is paying capital directly. That could sort of lead to a transition relatively easily, while also understanding that there are going to be projects that cannot be bonded and, and handled within the levy, such as, you know, the high school SOI that we're all aware of. So yeah, I, I think that, you know, a transition in that is, can, can be natural with the way that it's running.
Most importantly, it should generate a conversation.
Absolutely.
I think as a community, we should be able to assess those options and grow. And one of the things I'm most excited about is seeing how that occurs over the next several months. Clearly, the town has resources. I think you just pointed out several hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue that wasn't brought into the picture last week. I'm hoping over the next several weeks that we generate more creative ways to make our existing raise and appropriate amount available for town use, maximize and optimize. Nobody's looking to raise taxes. We're just using, looking to use them smarter. And I mean, conservative budgeting is great. I embrace it. But I think you can go to an extreme sometimes where you, you are probably take, holding back too much money and things like high free cash result, for example. I'm not saying that was the cause of this case, but that's a sign that maybe too much money was tied up in other vehicles that could have been released for operating use. So I look forward to some of the additional conversations you're going to have with the finance committee over the next several months. I observe you in your meetings. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you very, very much for pointing out some of the changes that I hope we can all see over the next several months with the, our friends on the finance committee and keep the line of communication open.
Yes, go. Just had one thing, because I put up the schedule before and I just want this to be sort of, you know, as I've gone about this at the moment and approaching, you know, as between now and May, I think one thing that we're going to want to look at as we go through this schedule is the potential for future budget cycles for the Select Board to look at doing an all-day budget seminar where every, all budgets are reviewed in one day or potentially two, that being town budgets outside of the school, and, and sort of allow the process to play out slightly differently. I, I don't want to make any drastic changes at the moment, but that is one sort of low-hanging fruit, I think, as we go through this schedule, I think we should continue to discuss for future cycles.
Okay.
Something to think about.
You don't need, you don't need a commitment from this group, but I can say I'm flexible to that idea.
Do you bring chocolate and coffee and you guys?
I did one, I, one final point that I...
Oh, please, go right in.
So, John, you wrote something that I thought was interesting that I wanted to kind of toss out there. Like, so I, I don't know if it was the governance talking to us or me talking, watching the governance committee. I do, I watch their meetings too. So I'm a crazy person. But anyway, one of the things they talked about was kind of thinking about like separating, putting capital in May, which I'm not sure about. I'm not sold on that. I haven't figured that out. But one of the things I think we could look at and explore, to John's point about capital, is like, is there sort of a way that we can start to sort of think about capital as like operating capital versus like project days? Like thinking about like, for example, when we buy new police cars, we do those every year. So maybe we start thinking about those kinds of things as sort of like a different kind of capital than community feels, you know?
Yeah.
Because those, those kinds of things, I think we, I, I think it would be good to start thinking about some of those things differently. And we could start trying to plan, even when, I know, like we've had this conversation with the chief before about some of his stuff, that it's not really practical to buy them over time, just sort of the nature of them, whether it's because they're all antiquated, because it's just sort of like we've gotten to this habit. But it might mean that maybe we start thinking about, like if we know that that, you know, the big fire truck's coming up, maybe we're setting aside a little bit of money for it. Just sort of thinking about those, those types of things a little bit more long-term.
Yeah. So in the, in, in what I sent out today, it sort of clarifies from, from the way that I view it, which is the capital outlay is, is what could be done through the omnibus budget. And then there are certainly things that price themselves out of that and, and should be done separately through a warrant article or multiple warrant articles depending on the situation. But just for example, and this would be Weston and Danvers, which as I said, are vastly different, would be the capital outlay through a budget would be vehicles that you're doing on an annual basis to maintain your fleet level, for example, right?
Right.
And just because you're reflecting it in the budget doesn't mean, actually in both of those communities, what we would do is here is your budget and it is being supported by the tax levy. It is tax-supported budget. Here's your capital outlay line within your budget that is being supported by free cash or a reserve fund. It is not inappropriate to use free cash to support, right, your budget, right? Those are both AAA communities. And S and P has no issue with using free cash to support the capital outlay within your budget, for, for understanding that these are vehicles and in a difficult economic situation, it is something that you can stop, whereas the rest would impact your service level.
Right.
And so, you know, there are... And so, you know, there are certainly those things where these are consistent capital needs that we're putting in, so we're building them into the budget, that's actually something that S and P wants to see.
Uh-huh.
And we do have a couple lines within our budget, I think it's police, I believe it's fire, or ambulance, or both, DPW, that have capital outlay in there.
Yes.
Um, I don't, I can't think of others, generally speaking, that would, but there are some, right? Facilities management would be one that we would consider, those types of things of where we say, here's capital outlay, we want to build this in, this is going to be an annual sort of cycle that we're going through to refresh our capital, and then larger items or things that are less frequent, we would want to make sure we're keeping on our five-year CIP that get, that it gets handled through the capital budget, so to speak.
Got you.
And you're right, the, the governance committee has discussed whether or not that should be May or, or October. Um, I, I don't particularly have an opinion on that, I think, you know, intentionally waiting until October to handle capital, I don't think is necessary. Making sure that, you know, you have, have the ability to handle capital outside of just the May town meeting, I think is, is probably in the best interest of the town.
And, and I think the only other point I want to make, just a quick comment, is that I just think it's important that any changes, or even anything we're doing existing, we understand why we're doing it. I, I mean, one of the things that drives me nuts sometimes in my, doesn't really happen in my line of work, because I'm, because I basically got to invent my position, so it's kind of nice, but I've seen this in previous one, uh, previous, uh, positions in the private sector, is that people do things because they always did them, and they don't know why they do them. And I want to know why we do things. And it, and I, and I, and I, one of the things that I think is great about having your eyes here now, Travis, is you have a good perspective on how to do this stuff, but you're also a fresh set of eyes on some of the things that we're doing, so you can start to say, why are we doing that? And I think that's important, because I think we, we have sort of a habit, it's like, well, we've always done it that way, that's the way we should do it. Well, it might be a good practice, but why do we do it that way? And maybe we should have to start answering, why do we do something? And having a good answer for that.
Gee, it's great to have a finance guy in our corner.
[laughing]
You guys good?
[laughing]
Are you good Travis?
Well, I have a question for John or Ben here, as former finance committee members. When was the last time money was moved out of the capital expenditure fund? Can you guys recall in the past three to five years, a transfer of money out of the capital expenditure fund?
Uh, you-
Well, you mean, you mean it where, where it went? Are, are you saying where it went down? Because, I mean, technically we have moved it quite a few times, it's just that-
It's in and out, but she's saying, when did we have an expenditure out of the capital?
Where we were actually, where the, the money-
I can't, I can't remember one.
I, I can't.
All right, it's just that $7 million?
Yep.
Yeah.
You, you mean, again, so we just spent out of it-
Well, she's saying, she's saying when did it-
At the town meeting, but you're saying that that-
When, when it was-
Decreases the balance?
The balance decreased, that's kind of how I-
It's like being perfectly clear.
We hear money in and out as a function of preparing for town meetings-
Right.
-to capital expenditure. I think Tina's question is, when was the last time you drew on it?
Yes.
Said, I'm going to buy, uh, you know, our existing resources weren't there through capital means.
I got you.
We, we got to hit, I, I don't remember it, honestly. I think it's been used as a de facto stabilization fund, and that's what it is, it's prompt two, prompt one is stabilization, so between the two of them, we have great reserves. All right, I think we've run the course on that discussion, having, uh, robust dialogue. It's about forty-five minutes before the governor comes looking for us, so let's move on to, uh, the final stretch of our agenda. What business, um, Mr. Sparrell, if you'd like to discuss the donation to Youth and Family Services from Wolf and Company?
Certainly. All right, so, um, uh, we have a donation, a grant, uh, in the amount of one, a gift, excuse me, uh, in the amount of $1,000 to Youth and Family Services. It's been received from, uh, Matthew Babinski and Wolf and Company Charitable Foundation Incorporated, and it's to be used for behavioral health programs at Youth and Family Services, and it will be deposited to the Youth and Family Services gift account. So I'll make that motion to receive this gift in the amount of $1,000, um, for Youth, uh, Youth and Family Services.
Do I have a second?
I will.
Uh, and with a very grateful sense, we thank you, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, next one, Ben?
Uh-
Something that I can, I, I included this in the packet for our previous conversation, but it is a separate item that you'll be approving the seasonal population increase for us to file with the ABCC.
Okay. Um-
So that was in your packet, I just misplaced it.
So I can, I can do that.
Oh, okay, I, I think I, that I-
[noise]
Okay, anyway, um, I'll go on-
Do you want Tina to make the motion, because she has it? Right?
Yes, I do.
Go.
I will make a motion to accept the seasonal resident population of 15,189 as of July 10th, 2021, um, from the, uh, Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission.
I have a motion of a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries.
And there are some of these things, just John, there's some things for you to sign, so.
Okay. Uh, meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 30th, 2020.
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Other four businesses, Sparrell?
Um, I do not have any other four businesses.
You good?
I do not, I can travel.
Well, I know he does, yeah.
[laughing] I know Travis.
Well, I can, I can.
Go Travis.
Okay, go Travis. All right, I have the two, so I shared with you-
You have four remaining.
I shared with you the, um, the reasons, uh, I've also shared with the finance committee, uh, the reasons to revise our agreement with MTC, um, increasing the flat fee by including litigation in there, um, and I would, unless there were any questions, um-
No, I think it's a great idea, great.
It's a good idea.
You want a motion sent on?
Yes.
Okay, all, uh, do you want to put a dollar amount to that?
So it would increase our flat fee to $5,000 per month to include litigation.
Uh, let's obtain a motion, uh, to increase our litigation line, $5,000 per month, as read by Mr. Hearn.
Does it increase to $5,000?
To $5,000, yeah.
Oop, to $5,000.
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Um, additionally, uh, and I believe we'll have one from the chief as well, if you'd like to do that on our other business, so the other one would be, um, there, the question has come up, uh, that, uh, signs need to go up related to the 17C at various points as you enter, um, the town of Holliston, that we've adopted this, so I would look for the board, um, to direct the police chief to locate where he would like those signs, and then the DPW director, uh, to oversee the installation of those signs.
I will make a motion to direct Chief Stone to identify what I believe is supposed to date as 11 locations, but whatever Chief Stone identifies as the location for the Drive 25, uh, sign, uh, to be posted, and I'd like to direct, also in the same motion, direct the DPW to install those signs, including the post, um, as the location is determined by Chief, the police chief, um, in time for January 1, 2021.
I have a motion of a second.
I will, we'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 That carries.
There we go. Uh, we do have one last thing where the chief, would you like to, uh, um, inform what we're looking for here?